I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I just want to remind everyone to silence your cellphone. If you plan to speak for a public comment today, there is a sign-in sheet over in the corner that just keeps you from having to say your address out loud. All right, we'll move to routine business. I'd entertain a motion to approve the agenda for this morning?
So moved, second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, thank you. Now I'd entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Leinberg?
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Kipli?
Aye.
Fender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to regular business. Our first item is the first reading and authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice on ordinance amendment number 2302. Scott Anderson, good morning.
Good morning, Scott Anderson, planning director. And today I am bringing forth a request to have you authorize the auditor to publish a hearing notice on a text amendment to the county zoning ordinance. This is a text amendment number 23 dash 02. This would amend the zoning ordinance to address transmission pipelines. There's several sections or articles of the zoning ordinance that would be amended to allow that, allow them as a permitted special, a special permitted use. It lists criteria which they, which transmission pipelines would need to meet, and then add some definitions. This has gone before the planning commission at last Monday's meeting, which was the proposed ordinance amendment had a lengthy hearing. There was a lot of public input, a lot of public comment, and the planning commission voted six to zero to approve the proposed ordinance, which I have provided to you and forwarded it to you, and asked that a hearing be set for May 23rd. And I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have. I know this is a topic that you're all familiar with and has a lot of public interest.
Any questions for Scott? Is there anyone here for public comment on this item today?
Scott?
Commissioner Karski, sorry.
They didn't want him to walk away and sit down.
That's okay. I don't think there's any public comments, so go ahead.
Nothing to do with this. I see that you have a code enforcement officer that you hired that maybe is a familiar face. I'm just taking this moment. We didn't have one last year, did we, or the year before?
So Shawna Goldhammer worked for us last year.
Oh.
And she's starting May 10th, next Wednesday. And she worked for us last year. She works varying hours, depending on how much work we have and her schedule. It was about one to one and a half days last week, last year. So we look forward to having her help us out this year. Dean, you're probably familiar with her and other city or other people because she worked for the city for many, many years doing code enforcement for the city. So we're very lucky to have her because she's very familiar with the ins and outs of code enforcement.
Agreed. So, good hire. Thank you.
All right, so back to this topic. Is there any commission discussion on this item? If not, I'd entertain a motion?
Move to approve or to second, the second hearing date for May 23rd.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 11, which is to authorize the chair to sign the construction administration agreement with Civil Design, Inc. for Project MC 20 dash 14, structure 50 dash 273 dash 030. Hi, good morning.
Morning Commissioners, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This was a project that we submitted to the South Dakota DOT for Bridge Improvement Grant Funding that we were successful with this year. We received a $502,400 state grant to replace our last timber structure in the county. We're asking your permission to award a contract to CDI so that we can get going on getting this project out for bids.
Any questions for Steve? Does the timber bridge then go straight to the museum?
Uh, no.
All right. Is there any public discussion on this item? If not?
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Steve gets to stay up here for a little while. So item 12 is to authorize the chair to sign the final design agreements with Civil Design, Inc. for Project MC 20 dash 13.
Once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. This is, we're looking for permission to contract with CDI to do final design on this project. We submitted this structure on a township road for a big funding this year, and we missed out by about seven points by having a project ready for final design. That gives you an extra 10 points when they do their considerations, which should make this bridge very competitive for state funding a year from now. Or if successful, we would be looking for about $620,000 in state funding. We're looking for your permission to sign this contract with CDI for $52,640 to get it ready for submittal.
All right, any questions for Steve? Emily, any public comment on this item? If not, I entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, this takes us to Steve's final item, which is to authorize the chair to sign the final design agreement with Civil Design, Inc. for design of Project MC 2310.
This is another structure that we were successful on getting a Bridge Improvement Grant funding for this year in the amount of $920,400. This is the next step of getting a contract with CDI to get it ready for bids. Seeking your approval to sign an agreement with CDI for $58,392.45.
Commissioner Karski.
Just curious, Steve, I know you don't have a crystal ball, but what are you, what are you looking at for, you know, engineering estimates and bids and that type of thing?
Everything's been coming in high, so all our submittals, all the consultants have been good about in changing their engineer estimates to take into account pricing that's been received this year, plus anywhere from 15 to 20 percent. This year, when we did our submittals for the big funds, we were able to do a contingency of 15 percent. All the other agencies did the same. That's why there was a really large pot of money available in 2023, and fewer projects were awarded than they anticipated just because the inflation and the costs were so high.
So it's 15 over the engineering estimate?
Yes, that's where we were able to add an additional 15 percent contingency. This is a rehab project where it'd be a redeck and guardrail, which is similar to the project North Asserman that we rejected the bids on earlier this year. That was also big funded, and because pricing has gone up, the DOT has given us an additional 15 percent on that project also.
Remind me, how far out was that one that we rejected?
It was off by about 40 percent.
Forty, okay.
It was a very specialized project. That's why we were happy to get this project awarded because it's an identical project to that project. The company did the job, but the job is out of North Dakota. So we plan on bidding both projects together now, hopefully to get some economies of scale.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Other questions for Steve? Any public comment on this item this morning? All right, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval, second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 14, which is a motion to approve a new limited public use policy. Is our auditor going to be here? Okay, go ahead. And we'll just move on to item 15, and we'll come back to item 14 when our auditor is available. So item 15 is the Register of Deeds Annual Department Brief. It's Amanda's first time. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Good morning Commissioners. Amanda Halsey, Register of Deeds. Today I get to talk a little bit about the office that I've been learning so much about for the last four months, well, longer than that, and just kind of brief you guys on what's been going on for the last year in our office. So we hold the historical documentation for real estate, tax liens, UCCs, vital records. We don't hold them in our office, but we are the registrar for the State Department of Health for vital records. We also hold on to the county aid liens, and we help file fictitious names along with the Secretary of State. So as many of you are probably aware, in 2020 and 2021, we saw record numbers. We had a little bit of a decrease in numbers for total recordings, as you can see, especially with the real estate, going from '21 to '22. And now this year, it's been a steady decrease as well. For the vital records, on the other hand, we had an increase last year in the birth certificates and then the marriage licenses issued. The, I had the question last week, what's the difference between a marriage license and marriage certificate? We issue the marriage licenses in our office, so if someone's going to get married, they need to come to us. They can go to any office in the state for Register of Deeds as long as they're getting married in the state of South Dakota. And then if they come to our county, they don't have to get married in our county. But the marriage certificates then are if people, once people have gotten married in the state of South Dakota, anywhere in the state of South Dakota, they can come to us and we can print that marriage certificate for them. Same with births and death certificates. So like I was saying, 2020 and 2021, we had an increase by a long shot from where we were back in 18 and 19. A little bit of a decrease then last year. And now so far this year, we are lower now than we were at this time in 2018. Yesterday, we had a pretty large number of recordings and for so far this year. And I was looking at the income. I'm like, okay, that's great. Our revenue was like $17,000 for the day. I looked at it from yester, yesterday's day last year, it was $40,000. So I was like, well, that's not as great as I thought it was going to be. But what's happening, basically, the interest rates, as you've heard, are up substantially from what they were last year at this time. You know, I bought my house a year ago, last year, and it was at closing table. The lender said, yeah, you locked out, locking in when you did. So a lot of people are seeing that. They were holding off, holding off, and then now interest rates are higher, and they can't afford the same houses they could with the money. We are seeing more from the title companies. So if the title companies get busy historically, the month they're busy, the next month we're busy. So as long as they come, keep coming into our office and saying, we're busy today, we'll know we're, we're looking better. So how we end up bringing revenue to the county, we have these five revenue streams. We have our recording fees. So each real estate document or every document filed with us usually has a $30 fee. Some are 60, like a plat, some are 20. There are a few documents that can be recorded that are exempt from recording. So like if it's a state document or a county document, we waive the fee. Transfer fees, we make five, we make 50 cents for every $500 or a dollar for every $1,000 of a real estate transfer. So if you sell a house or someone sells a $200,000 house, the transfer fee is $200. And that goes directly to the general fund for the county. We also make money off of the vital record copies and the marriage licenses and then copy fees if title companies or anyone comes into our office and wants copies of documents that we have recorded. That's a dollar per page. So you can see, I've just, the majority of our income comes from transfer fees. And without having that many real estate documents, there are very high transfer fees. So far this year, we're just not hitting the same numbers. Same then with recordings. The fewer recordings we're seeing, we're not, we're not going to hit that number. Some of the monies get split out to different portions of the state. So recording fees, we as the county keep $25 that goes to the general fund, and then $5 of that goes into the M&amp;P fund for the Register of Deeds. I'll talk about that in a second. Transfer fees, like I said, entirely stays with the general fund for the county. Marriage licenses, we keep $10 of it for the county, and $30 goes to a domestic abuse shelter fund that's determined within the county. The marriage certificates, we keep all $15 for the general fund. And then birth and death, we keep five, and 10 goes to the state vital records department, so the Department of Health. And then with copy fees, we also keep 100 percent for the general fund. So the M&amp;P fund, that was something that was built out in legislature in 2012. The Register of Deeds offices across the state went to legislature and said, look, we are not able to keep our records up to date. We're, we're losing vital documents that the county needs in order to be able to keep, keep moving forward with our real estate. And the, some of the documents in our office are dated back to the late 1800s. Now you think about trying to preserve that and the cost when you have thousands and thousands of documents that you're trying to preserve. The general funds for each county were not able to sustain it. So between the Register of Deeds and the title companies, they came to an agreement to move from a per-page rate on the recording fee to a flat rate of $30. And then the $5 out of that stays with the Register of Deeds. So $3 are kept within the county that it's earned, and $2 are gone, go into a fund for the state. And then at the end of the year, all of the money from what was sent to the state gets split evenly to all the counties. So our county does contribute to other counties across the state being able to preserve their documents. But it's all important for the benefit of the state. So what I've been working on so far in my term, we're continuing to digitize our old books. That way we can keep preserving those paper copies that we have from years and years and years ago. The surveyors, the title companies, they can come in, they can access that on the computer in the vault, not from anywhere but in the vault. We're not putting our records out there just for anyone to log in from their home. They have to come and sign in, and then they can access our records. And then the other thing, right now, we're still using the AS400, so J-Walk. And Monte had talked about it during his presentation. I've been working with him quite a bit just to try to find a new solution so we can record faster, be more efficient with our resources and our staffing. So working on that, we don't have a contract in place, but once we have that set, the monies will come entirely from the M&amp;P fund, and that's already budgeted for the year. So the project that I'm looking at right now is roughly $85,000 to $90,000. That is budgeted out of the M&amp;P fund entirely for the year. So that's something I hope to have in this year. And then next year, we would start looking at the e-recording portion of that software. I don't want to bring it all on at once. My staff just, will need to learn the first step of the program, and then we'll move on from there and make sure that everything's running smoothly before all of a sudden we have e-recordings coming in and we don't know what to do with them. And that is all I have for you guys. If you have any questions for me.
Thank you. Questions this morning? Commissioner Karski?
Nobody else does. Are you, based on what you're telling, I'm just reading between the lines, budgetarily for your office, I mean, it looks like revenues are going to be significantly hit. I mean, is there a pretty good trend line in that direction or?
I was thinking it was coming back up by the beginning of April, and then towards the middle and end of April, we just dropped off back to where we were at in February. And time will tell with, like I said, with the title companies coming in in the last couple of days and saying, hey, we're really busy. But nothing's changing with interest rates. The summer hits and people want to move when it's warm out and not snow. But yeah, I do think that it's going to be down substantially from even what was budgeted for expectation of revenue this year.
So through April this year compared to last year, do you, can you contrast the two?
Yeah. I'm going to go back up here. So I don't think it'll actually show me my numbers, but you know, here's end of March, this light blue line. And last year, we were up by about $300,000, more than what we're at right now for the year.
Okay.
And then this was the end of April, and that's a difference of $450,000 almost.
Ouch.
So, yeah, quite a bit.
And are those revenues used to fund your office operations or, I mean, help me understand that completely. Maybe I should know this already, but?
Well, it goes to the general fund.
Goes to the general fund, okay.
And then more of the expenses for the office, other than payroll, come from the M&amp;P fund than they do out of the general fund. But we can't take salaries out of the M&amp;P.
M&amp;P is Maintenance and?
Maintenance and Preservation Act. So we can pay for anything that is going to help preserve the longevity of the documents in the office. So we just can't pay for staffing.
Okay, so I mean, yeah, you could have a, easily a million-dollar shortfall based on the current trend?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Question, Madam Chair?
Please. Commissioner?
Do you know if this trend is occurring in other counties?
It is, yes. In talking to like Lincoln County, Davison County, and then I was in Pierre last, well, two weeks ago, everyone is seeing it. The title companies all over the state are saying the same thing to them, and they're, they're all under. It's nice that we have more revenue with the vital records, but it just doesn't add up. You know, it's a difference of maybe $15,000 more from one year to the next when we have more people coming into town, having, having kids, getting married. We're seeing higher vital records because of the population increase. But there's a lot of people who are renting, and we don't make money off of when people move from one apartment to the next. There's no transfer fee.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kipli?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Great presentation, Amanda. I appreciate it. And I'd also just appreciate your fresh eyes and new insight into something. So just kind of an open-ended question of what's been the biggest surprise in the first four months? What, what have you, what has opened your eyes the most to some of the processes down there?
Probably just the fact that every day for everyone down there is going to be unexpected things coming up. You know, with Cheryl leaving a couple of weeks ago, she had been here 45 years, and there was still, every week I would go to her office and say, what's going on? She's like, I have never seen this before. Like, you've been here for 45 years, and there's still new things that come up every single day. So I enjoy that part of it a lot. I like learning new things as quickly as I can. But it is a challenge to be like, you're going in one direction, and then you've got to completely flip to a different direction. You know, you're going from vital records to real estate to trusts. And yeah, it's, it's fun, but it's a challenge.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much.
Much.
Keeping track of documents is an issue for your department, and last week we heard a lot about the courts and the issues that they are having. So I'm going to suggest they find their own M&amp;P fund because that would be helpful for them as well. All right, thank you. We can circle back to item 14. The auditor's here now. So item 14 is a motion to approve a new limited public use policy. Good morning.
Good morning. Sorry for the delay. I got caught right before I came up the stairs.
No worries, that happens.
So slight correction on that briefing memo. We didn't go back. Once we found out that there was an existing policy for limited public use, this is actually an update to the old policy. So I just wanted to clarify that. So Minnehaha County buildings that we have here exist to accommodate the business of county government, the courts, and the citizens of Minnehaha County. While we appreciate the citizens and those who wish to take an active role in government decisions at all levels, the county buildings must accommodate many people every day without any unnecessary delay or inconvenience. So our current public use policy does not designate areas that political activity can take place. The current policy states, all persons wishing to gather signatures will abide by the following guidelines. And then it lays out some pretty, I would say vague things, but remain outside of county buildings and not obstruct individuals as they enter and exit the building, conduct themselves in a polite, courteous, and professional manner. And in case of severe weather, those collecting signatures may stand inside the entryway if they do not impede those entering and exiting. So that's not real clear whether or not they could get signatures or not under the current policy. We've witnessed an increase in activity with those collecting signatures, but also those who wish to share a message of opposition. And we would like to have better control over the activities that take place on the campus. So the policy that I'm presenting to you would designate specific areas outside where political activity is permitted. Do we, can you guys move to the pictures? There should be two. Okay, so in front of the courthouse, it would be the area on the sidewalk, not in front of the steps. So keeping people away from that traffic flow area. And then if you go down to the next photo, so at the county building, it would move people that are gathering signatures away from the doors, the entrances on the west side of the building. So, and I've worked with facilities and also with state's attorney to make sure that this is doable. But, so item number five in the new policy addresses expected conduct during political activities, which now includes respecting others that may share the designated space and respecting those who wish to decline signing a petition. And then we also added item number eight. And this was based on, so several times recently, I have found a table with petitions outside of the building, and nobody is attending those petitions. And so in that case, we added item number eight, and it just says, utilizers shall not leave any material unattended within the designated areas, including without limitation petitions, signs, banners, pamphlets, tables, and chairs. And then one idea with that area where they would be standing, as Mark Krenz had suggested, he needs to re-stripe the parking lot anyway. So he would like to stripe that better. And then we would also have cones to place outside. Once a person checks in with the auditor's office, we could take those cones outside. So after your review, and if there's any public comment, I would ask for your approval of this updated policy.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the auditor? Not seeing anyone right now. I'll see if, is there any public comment on this proposed amendment to this policy? Not seeing any. I'll turn it back over to the commission for commission discussion. Commissioner Karski?
I'm sorry, Leah, should I? Yeah, petitions are always interesting because, I mean, people kind of wander around and, hey, would you? And that type of thing. Are we telling people that they're going to be confined to that area? I mean, what if you have two or three different people out there with petitions? Do we segment that off? I guess I'm just thinking, if we're going to be policing this, for lack of a better term, I mean, what, what are, what are the other kind of unspoken rules? You know, you can't leave this boundary. I mean, you can't be walking through the parking lot with a petition. What, I mean, what are we doing?
Well, currently, there, there isn't any boundary, except that they're not supposed to come inside. And even that's not clearly stated. The idea would be that, yes, they would be in that designated area. Now, I'm not going to like watch the parking lot all day. And, but for their safety, Now, I'm not gonna like watch the parking lot all day and, but for their safety, it would be best if they're in that area. Um, the thing that we wanted to address the firmest is that they cannot come inside the building and stand where the doors are to get the signatures and block the sidewalk. So we didn't really want them on the sidewalk because if there's someone that, that's using the, um, accessible areas to get a wheelchair up there or something, that, that would be, they would be in the way of that. So we need to make the building, uh, as accessible as possible without having three or four people standing right by the door, grabbing people as they come in and out. Um, I think the citizens don't really appreciate having to, you know, go through that. So, um, moving them out in that designated area would keep them away from the door.
What about signs or banners or that type of thing?
Um, for our instruction or their signs?
Theirs if they want, they have a table and they, can they put a banner or sign?
Well, currently, we're not restricting what they can have, uh, if they want to have a sign. You know, I know now there's been a table up by the building quite a bit with signs on it. Um, we just don't want them to leave that, um, those items unattended. Um, we've had instances where, uh, a gentleman has been leaving the table with the petitions. And then he goes to move his vehicle, but it takes him about twenty minutes because he goes over to come and go. And, you know, kind of moseys his way back over here. And in the meantime, there's signatures that are on the table that people could sign and he's not witnessing those signatures. And that's not following state statute, so.
Okay.
But if, if there's other, if there's modifications, um, we're, we're open to those. But we've kind of looked at all, a lot of options and come up with that as being the best solution.
Okay, thank you.
Eric Kipley?
Madam Chair, thank you. Um, and I know from a legal perspective, you know, restraining political speech is generally frowned upon. But this is, seems to me to be a reasonable time, place and manner restrictions, uh, that take in mind safety. And I think this is fairly well thought out. Uh, the only questions I'd have, and, and maybe I can put the state's attorney on the spot or just ask if, we, we talk about political activity. And I think what we have mainly in mind is in the day-to-day function is the petition gathers and whatnot. And I think this is very reasonable i- in that realm. But I'm just thinking of other, uh, political activity. I, I think within the last couple of months, I think there was a protest at like the courthouse. You know, there's different things that people want to gather and just kind of make their voices heard, either at the county building or I can think of a lot potentially at the courthouse. These spaces might not be large enough. What, what would we contemplate if there was a group that, that said that they would like to have their voices heard? And they'd have a hundred people come here to have some kind of event and a speaker for thirty minutes or an hour? How do we handle that? Is that different in kind than this? Or do they have to get some kind of permit to have a march or a protest? Or just, just thinking through, uh, beyond the petition signers?
Um, for larger events like that, they do have to get a permit.
Okay.
Um, and it's ideal that they would contact, you know, say the police department and just notify them that they're gonna have an event. Um, and I know that's occurred and we're not, um, I guess we're not technically limiting that. We're not open during a lot of those hours, so, um, that's different, but Eric might have input.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but just broadly speaking, that we're not, uh, overly restricting speech with what we're contemplating here.
Madam Chair, um, Commissioner Kipley, um, that, that's true. And you mentioned the three buzzwords, time, place and manner. And that this is been deliberately crafted to make sure that, that we are providing an opportunity and a space for those individuals. Political activity may not be the bl- best collective terminology on this. But if you look at the, the beginning of the, the policy, that is where a lot of different types of activity are collectively referred to throughout the policy thereafter as political activity. So to the extent that your question is more geared towards the larger group aspect, um, uh, the auditor's already mentioned that there is a permitting process for those things. And certainly the, um, involvement of both the sheriff's office and police department is typically done for those kind of events. And as she also mentioned, those are generally after hours, um, not always, but, but typically have been. So not an effort to try and restrain those, but for the day-to-day activity that have in the past impeded pedestrian trafficking and out of the building, this is an attempt to try and get them away from the door, away from the stairs where the primary access into the building or exit in the building has been. And, and still allow them a place of some prominence and visibility to, to get their petitions and or do whatever other political activity, First Amendment activity that they would like to engage in.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Madam Chair. Commissioner? Just a question regarding, I think you had made a comment about point number nine. Um, you had said that the previous policy was vague if petitioners could gather signatures in the building? Does this, is it, did I misunderstand or just?
Well, so, and in the previous policy, it stated in the case of severe weather, those collecting signatures may stand inside the entryway if they do not impede those entering and exiting. It didn't specify whether or not they could continue to gather signatures while they were inside. We do want to allow, if there is severe weather, like the deray show that came through, you know, something that's unexpected, um, that's severe, a tornado, um, that they could come inside the building. But we do want them to, um, not gather signatures while they're inside the building, cause that's not allowed. So they would need to, um, discontinue, uh, those efforts while they're inside. So coming in the building is certainly doable if they need to come in and use the restroom. I mean, we're, we're not restricting that at all. Um, we just don't want signature gathering done inside the building.
Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion. I can't remember, did I ask for public comment on this? Is there anybody here?
You did.
All right, I forgot to mark it, so.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you very much for coming. All right, so that takes us down to item sixteen, which is the Public Advocates Annual Department Brief. Julie Hofer, good morning. Thank you for coming.
Julie Hofer, Public Advocates Office. Um, just maybe a brief overview of our office because we do have some new commissioners here. Um, the office of the Public Advocate opened in January of nineteen ninety-nine. The, we provide legal representation to low-income people, uh, charged with crimes or who otherwise qualify for court-appointed counsel. The primary function of the office is to represent clients, uh, with which the Public Defender's Office has a conflict of interest. Um, the purpose of forming the office was to reduce the number of private attorneys that had to be appointed to these cases, um, and thus saving the county money. I have submitted my annual report, uh, for two thousand and twenty-two. Um, numbers were down a little bit in terms of open and closed cases. Uh, we opened two thousand two hundred and thirty-six cases and we closed two hundred, two thousand three hundred and seventy-five. Um, and that was down about a hundred and twenty-five cases from the year before. Uh, of note though, um, the number of felony cases, uh, that we took, uh, rose by about fifty. Um, and so felonies are more time-consuming, um, usually sometimes require experts. Um, and just overall more, more work for an attorney, so we did have that. Looking at some, um, emerging issues, um, my second issue is cost savings to the county. Um, I did get the numbers from court administration in terms of the nu- what was paid out to the private attorneys that took court appointments. Um, the court's budget was one million three hundred and thirty thousand, thirty, three hundred thousand thirty, if I can talk today. One million three hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars. And they indicated that paid ninety, nine hundred and sixty-four vouchers. Um, he explained it to me that a voucher, it's not necessarily equal to one case, it could have multiple cases. Or it could just be a part of a case because vouchers are submitted at different times. But, uh, he indicated that it, it was, it was close to the number of cases. Um, our budget, um, was one million three hundred and eight thousand. And we closed, uh, two thousand three hundred and seventy-five cases. So our average exten- expenditure per case was five hundred and fifty-one dollars. Um, the private attorney expenditure per case was one thousand three hundred and eighty dollars. So I think our office continues to do what initially was created to do. And that is saving the county money, uh, in terms of these court appointments that have to go outside of the Public Defender's Office. Um, one other issue that I looked at, um, is technology and court location changes. And, uh, I'll just start with technology. Um, there's been some changes in our technology. One being we have to e-file every motion and order, um, in our e-filing system. Where it used to be, we'd just send those things over to the, to the clerk of courts and they would file them for us. That is a significant time constraint on attorneys. Um, you have to do the motion, you have to get it in the right form. You then have to go into the system and there's about four or five steps in order to get that done. So if you have an attorney that's doing that on, say, four to five cases, like, could easily take an hour for that, for that to occur. Um, the other issue we have, um, and I look at these issues as these things are making things easier for other departments, while sometimes not, probably not knowingly. But the, but the downside is it makes things harder for people in our office. The other issue that we've had is the state's attorney's new system. There's been glitches in getting our discovery, sometimes it comes over, sometimes it is emailed. If it is emailed, the attorney then has to physically move the file. There's steps to be taken to do that where it just used to be in our case management system. And I'm hopeful that as we continue to work through that, um, those things will change. Um, but just another example of how something that makes things easier for another office can make things more time-consuming for us. Um, also court location changes. I think I touched on this last year, but I'm also looking forward in the next three years when the juvenile justice system, uh, Juvenile Justice Center opens at, in court will be full-time at JDC. We've moved court to the jail courtroom to make things more efficient for the jail. That then puts additional time constraints on us because we have to spend our time going over to the jail courtroom, getting into the jail courtroom. Um, where it used to be, say, if I were double or even triple booked at the courthouse, it, I could usually make it work out because I do, you know, be up on the sixth floor and then I can run down to third. And that's not the same now with the, uh, jail courtroom. Because that takes at a minimum fifteen minutes just to get over there. And then probably another fifteen to get back, once you go through all of the doors and go across the, go across the, um, uh, parking lot. Um, and just looking forward in the three years when I think that the Juvenile Justice Center is going to be open, I anticipate we're probably going to have to have an attorney out there almost full-time because of courts running there exclusively um, and not at courthouse. I mean, just, the, just the drive time from here out to JDC and back, you're probably talking at minimum forty minutes, depending on how the traffic is. Um, so that's just another upcoming and emerging issue I see that is going to require more time for our attorneys. Um, so those are just kind of the issues I see in terms of, um, I guess, maybe some constraints on our time, um, and, uh, things that could be done about it. I know as I'm looking forward to the budget, um, I plan on asking for a legal office assistant to assist in some of these matters. Um, and obviously, we don't know what the budget is going to, to end up to be finally. But when I do make that request, these are my reasonings behind them. So, any questions?
Thank you. Questions for Julie? Commissioner Kipley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, what would you attribute, uh, some of the factors going into the private attorney costs being so much larger than your office's cost?
Well, um, I suspect, and I, I guess looking back at my time when I was a private attorney and I took court appointments, um, you know, everything that we have in our office is geared specifically to doing these court appointments. Um, but if you're a private attorney out on your own and like you're the one opening the file, you're the one, you know, doing all the, the initial paperwork where we have office assistants to do that, that could cause, you know, more time. Um, it, I have seen, and, and most of the private attorneys that take court appointments have worked within our offices. Um, so they're pretty efficient. Um, but if you get a new attorney that is not familiar with maybe an issue, um, that could take more time as well. I mean, I've been doing this for twenty-five years, so like any suppression issue, I probably have a brief that I've already done. And so it just kind of takes me maybe what would take me an hour to do might take them like five, six, seven. Um, so I think there's various, various things that could go into that. And, I mean, it also could be that there, I mean, it, so, because I know we've had a couple, like manslaughter and murder cases that where there's, you know, four or five co-defendants. And so they are getting some of these bigger files as well, um, and that's going to take more time and add to the cost.
Thank you, other questions, comments? I appreciate your presentation. I thought the information about the constraints that you're dealing with was really thought-provoking. Cause sometimes, you know, we, we have the whole puzzle that we have to think about and, and efficiencies on one side of the puzzle do necessarily have, um, ramifications. And so it's helpful to think through that. My understanding from talking to the Director of IT is that the PPK system hopefully is going to, um, start working more seamlessly for you. So it'll be much closer to what you had been used to, time will tell, obviously.
That would be great.
Um, but some of the other things that you brought up, uh, were really, uh, caused me to think, so I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to item seventeen, which is the Public Defender's Annual Department Brief. Good morning, Tracy.
Good morning. Do I have the ability to control or? Awesome. Tracy Smith, Public Defender's Office, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, again, like Julie said, I know we had some, have some new faces here. So, um, I wanted the opportunity to, um, talk a little bit more about what the Public Defender's Office does. Um, we're appointed to, um, anyone who's facing a loss of liberty interest. The county manages indigent defense by, uh, having the Public Defender's Office, the Public Advocates Office. And then also when our offices can't handle, um, court-appointed cases, then it also goes to the appointment of private counsel. Um, what is public defense? Uh, Gideon versus Wainwright, this year's the sixtieth anniversary, um, established the right to public defense. And essentially, what is public defense? Essentially, anybody who's facing a loss of liberty interest. Um, our mission is to protect the fundamental rights of anybody who's facing a loss of liberty interest. And it does include more than just jail time. That's often what we talk about, but it is also responding to the unforeseen consequences and the serious ramifications that come along with arrest, the prosecution and conviction. And so a lot of times, there's many devastating consequences for citizens in our community who are facing, um, not just jail time, but it's also the right to vote, um, loss of housing, loss of public benefits, student loan eligibility, um, all which can impact entire families um, and the community as a whole. The procedure for requesting counsel is individuals must fill out an application for court-appointed counsel. And they can do that in the clerk of courts office here in Minnehaha County. They can also do that in the, at their first appearance in court. Uh, they can also apply online at the UJS website. Um, there's also, um, an unknown thing that most people don't even realize is that, uh, court-appointed attorneys are not free. Uh, everyone who applies for a court-appointed attorney, um, is subject to have to pay back their, uh, court-appointed attorney fees. And, um, it, if it's not ordered by the judge as part of the sentence, it becomes an automatic lien. So, um, they do eventually have to pay back their court-appointed attorney fees. We are, uh, bound by a Public Defender Advisory Board by state law. And, uh, we meet, uh, quarterly with our advisory board. And basically, it's two attorneys who are selected by the presiding judge, two county commissioners, a lay- judge, two county commissioners, a layperson, and the attorneys that are selected by the presiding judge, both either, sometimes they're retired judges, sometimes they are just attorneys that have a lot of experience with criminal law. So our goals for the last year were to continue collaboration with stakeholders. It's imperative that we are preemptive rather than reactive when evaluating how we best serve the community. As an office, we have a robust understanding of our connection to the community. We have looked for opportunities to best serve our clients. This last year, we finalized the contract with UJS so that we can attain money for the work that we have been doing with problem-solving courts. We have an attorney who serves on vets court, we have an attorney who serves on drug court, we have an attorney who serves weekly on mental health court, and also on DWI court. Different things that we have been working on is we're actively involved on many different collaboratives, work groups. We are very involved in sharing the common goal with addressing disproportionate minority contact and representation in the jails, ensuring that our clients have immediate access to mental health, substance use disorder services, ensuring that all of our clients, children, juveniles, have safe places to go if they're not able to be at home with their parents when they're released from a detention facility and they're, after they're released. And collaboration has been something that, in changing how we look at our clients and best being able to help them, is something that has really impacted how we see ourselves in taking a more holistic approach in representation. It's not just about jury trials. We've really taken an opportunity to see how we can be active in reducing jail stays, reducing recidivism. We are actively involved in problem-solving courts. We participate in the in-custody review team. We have our partnership with Southeastern Behavioral Health. Betsy Doyle, our chief deputy, was involved last week with the Emerging Adult Summit. Jonathan Ledigie, one of our senior trial attorneys, is the adjunct professor for USD School of Law. I am involved in the Indigent Defense Task Force. Soon, there will be released more information about 10 listening sessions that will be going on around the state with the dates for nine physical locations and one opportunity for, that will be virtual so that the public has more information about how they can participate with the task force and provide information about how the state can be more, improve Financial highlights within our office. Julie already did a good job at showing how private our office and her office, the case analysis for each of our different offices, so this slide is pretty much very similar to what she has already said. Our overall goal in providing this information is just to show that the average rate of change has not changed substantially in the last six years. We are the most cost-effective approach when it comes to providing indigent defense. As far as cases, we experienced, Julie indicated that her numbers have gone down. Unfortunately, we experienced a 14.5% increase in violent cases from '21 to '22. Much of this change was where the most serious charge was aggravated assault. Felony offenses increased by 10.16%. Misdemeanor offenses increased by 16%, and juvenile offenses increased by 53%. Why? This isn't by any reason by us doing anything wrong or Julie doing anything wrong. This is mainly because her office is a conflict office. Our office is always appointed first, so we receive a lot more misdemeanor offenses, and there's not usually very many conflicts, say, on a DWI or a driving while suspended. So the only time you really would see a conflict is maybe on a drug case, so which would be felonies. So that's why you see a higher level of serious cases within our office. Finally, here's that slide, sorry. And finally, looking ahead as far as what our goals are, I would just say Sioux Falls is a vibrant community. Our greatest strength as a community has always been our ability to celebrate diversity and respect how each person lives. We all have a desire to maintain safe communities for our children. We all have a desire to be healthy. Unfortunately, our biggest challenge has been recognizing how quickly our community is transitioning into a metropolitan community. As an office, our goal has been to serve our clients most effectively, and our biggest challenge in that has been recognizing that mental health has been a significant concern with regard to our clients, and that has led to behavior that is resulting in a lot of our clients ending up incarcerated. It is also much more effective to recognize that in order to best serve our taxpayers, we need competent staff, and we need to timely resolve our cases so that clients aren't sitting in jail for a longer period of time. One of the things that Judge Howman did last year, or this last year, was have a collaboration between all of us, what was called a stress test, where we closely identified the individuals who were sitting in jail for longer periods of time, and recognized that individuals who were working on competency restoration process were spending longer periods of time either waiting for bed dates or waiting for competency restoration services. And through that process, we were all working together and looking for opportunities to how each agency and each department could work together to address that. And by specifically identifying one paralegal in our office and specifically working with HSC, with community health providers, we have already seen a drastic change just by taking, all working together more collaboratively and seeing how we can help our clients better. Our goal for looking ahead with this increased focus on services, protecting the community, improving support through this multidisciplinary approach, I think we can better provide the tools and all be better partners with providing services for our clients. I don't know that specifically looking at arrest data is the best way to look at how we keep our communities safe. So finally, with regard to our request for positions next year, my plan will be to request more support staff. Although we don't have any social workers in our office now, my plan will be to specifically request a social worker and an investigator because I do believe that in taking a more holistic approach in how we help our clients, I do believe these, this is how we will best serve our clients and how we best serve our taxpayers in processing our cases and serving our clients better.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions this morning? Any public comment?
I just had one question.
Commissioner Blumberg.
Could you help me understand what competency restoration services means?
So anyone who is found not to be able to assist in their own defense due to having a mental illness, the court has found them to be unable to be prosecuted. They have to undergo competency restoration services. They can either do that within the jail, or they can do that outpatient typically through Southeastern Behavioral Health, or they need to do that inpatient through the state hospital at the Human Services Center.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you very much. Thanks for coming this morning.
Thank you.
All right, this takes us to opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here for public comment about something that's not on our agenda, this is your opportunity. Good morning.
Bob Colby, 636 West 21st. I'm going to hopefully offer a little history, some observations, and possibly some advice, and since it's free, it's worth everything you're going to pay for. It used to be said that if you were a political person, you ran for city council; if you were intelligent, you ran for county government. The things that we've been talking about, or you've been talking about, this meeting room, I think, is the fourth place that I've been in since they've been using this place for the county. Scott is probably the longest-term that was here. I don't know where the Carol was, but it's been a time or two ago. We've always been concerned about public documents, and if it goes back to the quote-unquote "more or less" early days, the Washington Pavilion was at one time looked at as being the repository for public documents, including the city, the county, the courts, game fission parks, and any other governmental agency that was here in Sioux Falls or close. The reason it didn't happen? The city would occupy 80% of that structure, and they wanted the assurance that the county would come and occupy their 20%. And because they were the primary user, they went out of the agreement at that time. We've always had an interest, as I said, in documents, and that's the reason that we have the museum's structure out there on Westport. And that was part of the reason that that was constructed. It was to collect and store documents, at least those that were germane to the county. And now, we talk about digitization, which you've been, at least was in the newspaper recently. Digitization has one thing to offer: quick access. And we've gone through how many different storage mediums for information. There's been floppy disks, microfiche, beta, CDs, DVDs, thumb drives, and all that sort of thing. And every time we do something, we take the A stuff, the most important stuff, and convert it from one medium to another. And if we have a little time, we start working on the B stuff, and what happens is the C stuff kind of gets set on the shelf, and so that doesn't get converted. One of the things that needs to be paid attention to for all government agencies is that when you have the B and C stuff, you make a concerted effort to retain the reader capacity, like wire tape recorders, or wire tape, that's an oxymoron, a wire recorder, or whether it's beta, or whether it's a floppy disk, that you have the medium to convert it into something that you can use. It doesn't do a darn bit of good to have, "I've got a floppy disk, and there's a lot of information here, but I don't know how to get it off. I don't know how to read it." I've myself done a lot of historic presentations, and I was using slides, carousels. I don't know if you can buy a carousel anymore. I still have the slides. There is no more Kodak. Things have changed. So we are not always aware of what's happening around us for the past and the future. It was, when I was down here, they found in Germany that women were possibly not going to have to take birth control pills because there were enough estrogens in the water, that it was changing the gender of the carp in the streams from male to female because we were not removing some of those chemicals. Then as I was coming this morning, they were talking about, I think it was PFAMs, the forever chemicals. We do things and don't look at the long term. Well, digital, though it is great for access, we don't know how long it will last. And the Library of Congress and/or the Smithsonian have been working on trying to age digital material, and they found that if they went to a, let's say, thumb drives, they got the same.
Thank you. Your five minutes is up, sorry.
Thank you very much. Sorry, Madam Chair, and the rest of you commissioners. Live long and prosper, and don't make mistakes.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment this morning? Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Trevor Jones. I'm with Summit Carbon Solutions. I'm going to, if allowed, will comment on the ordinance that was brought up earlier in the agenda. If you want me, I can.
Yeah, I'm sorry. You're really only allowed to do public comment on items that are not on our agenda.
Okay, appreciate the time, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anyone else for public comment this morning? All right, it takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any Commissioner Liaison Reports this morning? Commissioner Kipley.
Madam Chair, I got a couple. I was able to spend some time over at the courthouse, and they did some safety training over there and just wanted to pass along that it's another great collaboration that we shouldn't take for granted. We've got state employees over there that are secured and help with various safety things through county employees, which come through the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office did a great job last Friday conducting some safety training, active shooter training, all the different things in our modern world that we have to be aware of. So kudos to our sheriff's department, and then also all the state employees that make our courthouse run. And then secondly, got to go on a little road trip with Steve Groen. I think, is he still here? He stepped out. There he is. Okay, he can keep me honest here. But yeah, we got to travel some roads that will need repair. That's a big part of our budget and the things we do as a county is keep the highways running. So we got to go over some bridge projects, kind of talk the philosophy of grants and different things as we rode around. But then also, I draw to the group's attention here, we do have a facility in Colton, and it makes a lot of sense. So we have our new highway facility that I think all my sense. So we have our new highway facility that I think all my colleagues have been out to and see the value in that for the storage and maintenance of our vehicles, things like that. But when we get big snowstorms or big events, it's good to not have all of our eggs in one basket. So having an outpost in Colton helps have a couple employees out there. So during snowstorms, they don't have to come all the way into Sioux Falls, just go all the way back to the Colton area. But it was the first time I got my eyes on that shop. And it's pretty rundown as a facility. I see some of my colleagues shaking, nodding their heads. So just as we saw this winter, there's going to be occasions where we need our employees to hunker down for the night. And I think we're going to need some basic amenities at that facility that if we do see the value in that as an outpost, we might need to invest nothing crazy, but just some small ability to be able to have a couple guys that bunk up there and are able to, again, not have to go all the way home, or not have to go all the way to Sioux Falls, but provide that value, especially that northwest area of the county. So anyway, an enlightening trip, and a thank you to Steve for educating me along the way on some highway things. So that's all I have, Madam Chair.
As long as Steve is here, I was wondering if I can invite you forward to talk a little bit about the presentation that was made out at the Highway Department yesterday.
Yeah, the Sheriff's Department came, once again, Steve Groen, Highway Superintendent. We had our annual training day, first annual, where we had all of our staff together in our new training room, going over a variety of safety trainings. And the Sheriff's Department was nice enough to make a plaque thanking our snowplow team for their hard work and dedication this past winter. Part of that plaque was dedicated to the memory of John Crittenton, who passed away back on January 3rd while plowing. So we were fortunate enough and honored to have John's family join us for the plaque presentation. And it was just a nice day.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, just to kind of piggyback on Commissioner Kipley's comments, it's just, we are really fortunate here, the way that our departments work together. I was out for a little bit of that ceremony yesterday. And it was really fun to visit with folks and hear the appreciation that the Sheriff's Office has for the Highway Department, and how many times they bailed them out this winter, and how they worked together to get to emergency situations. And, you know, obviously, the situation with the Crittentons weighs on all of us, but that there is a price to be paid for public safety and safe roads and clear roads. So I just really appreciated being invited yesterday. So thank you. Any other comments this morning? I can see people scrolling through their phones, trying to remember what all they did this last week that they might need to report on. All right. Commissioner Blumberg?
Yeah. I have been meeting with, the 4-H group is getting started on quarterly meetings. So that's kind of exciting with different stakeholders working on ways to expand their programming for kids in the county. The Regional Dog Show, I think, is something that they're pretty excited about, starting out. I also have been able to attend the Juvenile Justice Group meeting. And that is a big learning curve. There's quite a bit with the core strategies of JDAI that I'm in the process of learning. And then I know we've all been made aware of the difficulties that the Treasurer's Office had with some systems being down. And I just wanted to mention that they have been under a bit of stress and working quite hard to get caught up now that things are back up and running. So just a big thank you to Chris and her staff.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. That takes us to non-action commission discussion. Any non-action commission discussion this morning? Tyler.
Thank you. Next Tuesday is your annual tour of the county that the Summetric Growth Alliance helps put on for us. Just a highlight of where you'll be going, you'll head off to, we'll start with a tour through Brandon, just to look at the new projects that have been going on there, primarily on the I-90 Plaza. From there, you'll go to Lippert and Spartan, businesses in Brandon, to tour those. From there, you'll look at Angus Anson Power Plant, and then we'll stop at the highway facility for lunch. And following that, we'll get a tour of the Raven Innovation Campus, as well as a tour of the City of Crooks and all the development that's been going on there. Finally, we'll go through Foundation Park for a review of what's happened there and head back to downtown, just to give everyone a chance to see what goes on outside of Sioux Falls.
Yes. Thank you for your work on that. It's a great agenda. Commissioner Karski, do you have a question for Tyler?
Yeah, any talk of adding wineries and breweries in the county to the...
They were looking to you to add that. So... All right. Any other non-action commission discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Move to recess.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. We will reconvene in an executive session.